As the council may remember, a couple of months ago, we were asked to put together a program related to taking back our parks and streets. And what really triggered this discussion about taking back our parks and streets was the increase in crime that we've been seeing here in Monrovia. As the council may know, in 2016, we had a 19% increase in violent and property crimes when compared with 2015. That statistic, 19%, resulted in 143 more victims of crime. That's not a trend that's happening in an isolated manner here in Monrovia. Up and down the state of California, we're seeing similar statistics. The most recent statistics that the state of California published were from former state attorney general Kamala Harris, who reported that in 2015, the state experienced a 10% increase in violent crime and an 8% increase in property crime. That increase means that there were 92,309 more victims of crime in 2015 than in the prior year. And in response to that, the question's been asked, what's happening? We get asked that a lot. What's the city doing? What is the police department doing? And we're doing a lot. We're trying to do everything that we can and utilize every tools that we have to combat the increase in crime. But our hands are tied in some respects based on state legislative changes that have been enacted over the past couple of years. Those include AB 109, Proposition 47, and also Proposition 57. And so the real genesis of the Taking Back Our Parks and Streets campaign is a public education and awareness initiative where we really want to start helping our community recognize and realize what is happening in the state and ways in which we can start making our community safer, our state safer, ways that we can really work to take back our parks and streets. And so to that end, we've developed a variety of public education and outreach materials that we'll be posting on our website here in the coming week. It includes a brochure pamphlet that really outlines the challenges and the changes that have happened in the state that have resulted in a decreased ability for us to keep our community safe. There are some fact sheets related to the significant changes in state legislation that have really eroded our criminal justice system here in California. And we have sample letters. And the sample letters are really important because the only people that can make the changes needed for us to be able to take back our parks and our streets are those that work in Sacramento, our state legislators, our governor. They're the only ones that can restore tools that we've lost to combat the increase in crime. And so we have some letter templates and also contact information for our state legislators. And we're really hoping that the community will stand with us and help support us in our effort to make sure that violent criminals are appropriately incarcerated, that repeat criminals and folks that are eroding the quality of life here in California are sentenced to the terms in prison that they appropriately deserve. There's been some question, though, as it relates to the details. What's actually involved in AB 109 and Prop 47 and Prop 57? What are some of those tools that we've lost? And we've asked, and we're so fortunate tonight, to have Michelle Hanacy with us. Michelle is currently president of the Association of Los Angeles Deputy District Attorneys. She's seeing firsthand every single day what's actually happening with the criminal justice system here in California. And we're so delighted for her to spend some time with us and share some background information with the council and the community related to what's actually happened in California these past couple of years. So with that, I'd like to see if Michelle would come on up and have a chance to share with us the impacts of AB 109, Prop 47, and Prop 57.
Thank you very much for having me. After this lovely meeting so far, I feel a little bit like Debbie Downer. I never have good news to offer, but at least I can help you understand what's going on here. So we've got a lot of numbers, these propositions and legislation. We've got AB 109, Prop 47, and Prop 57. They all do different things. AB 109 transferred responsibility for the housing and supervision of some sentenced felons to the counties. The state was doing this largely to save money, so rather than the state paying to house them and paying to supervise them, they shifted that responsibility to the counties. Proposition 47 reduced sentences for drug possession and thefts under $950. It had some other effects on minor offenses. And then Prop 57, which was just enacted last November, does allow early release of state prison inmates and also made it more difficult for juveniles to be charged as adults. So we'll go through these in a little more detail, starting with the first, AB 109, which was titled Public Safety Realignment. And the words "public safety" are in the names because this is what gets voters to vote for these, and this is what gets them passed in the legislature, notwithstanding the language of the actual legislation. So the key features of AB 109 is, as I said, it shifted responsibility for housing and supervision of certain inmates to the county. And the inmates whose responsibility was shifted to the county, we call them non-non-nons, the non-serious, non-violent, non-sexual offenders. One of the key features, however, is that now instead of being on parole when they're released from prison, they are on what's called post-community release supervision under local probation. And rather than being returned to state prison for up to a year if they violate, the most they can really get is 10 days of what is called flash incarceration. And to illustrate the downfalls that are involved with flash incarceration, the parolee who shot and killed, police officer, Whittier Police Officer Keith Boyer, was on parole. He had been released about a year prior to that shooting. He had been violated and given flash incarceration five times prior to shooting Officer Boyer. If he had been put back in prison for a year, he would not have been on the street to commit that shooting. So these are very real consequences from shifting the supervision to the local agencies and away from state parole. The impact of AB 109, we have a decreased prison population. That's what it was supposed to accomplish. It increased the county jail population, making it difficult for the sheriff to house low-level offenders when you now suddenly have to house felons for the duration of sometimes what are very long sentences. For example, there are inmates serving time in county jail now with sentences of over 30 years for drug offenses that are serious drug offenses but don't qualify them for state prison. The low-level offenders are therefore being released early to make room for those non-non-nons. And we have seen an increase in property crime rates after that. Now, the media likes to say that there is no provable correlation between Proposition 47 and the crime rates, and that it's a total coincidence that property crime rates started going up. But everyone agreed property crime rates did start going up. So to get reliable numbers, I went to a fairly reliable source, the one that Oliver quoted, the California Department of Corrections, their annual violent crime report. And I used those numbers to graph property and violent crime after the enactment of AB 109. So you can see there on the chart, property crimes on top, and it's per capita on the bottom, and straight numbers on the top, and the enactment date of AB 109. And you may ask yourself, well, but they're going down. AB 109 was enacted, and the property crime rates went down for two years, so that must be good. But you have to remember that under AB 9, convicted criminals were still being incarcerated. They were just being incarcerated in county jail rather than state prison. The big change is what happened to them when they got out, how they were supervised. And it also didn't transfer existing prisoners. It only applied to new prisoners. So offenders subject to AB 109 would have to be convicted, serve their time, and get released before you would start seeing the effects of AB 109. So on a basic non-non-non felony, maybe 16, two, or three years at 50% credit, you would expect the first offenders to start getting released a year or so after the effective date. And what do we start seeing, a year, two years after the effective date? That's when the property crime rates start going up. Not only the property crime rates, the violent crime rates also started going up two years after the enactment of AB 109. And you have to remember that although these inmates were considered non-non-nons, non-violence for purposes of that sentence, it never took into account their criminal history. So they could have a very violent criminal history and still end up doing county jail time for their felony sentences under AB 109. And then when they get out, rather than being supervised by parole, they're being supervised by county probation, who really wasn't equipped to take on this job. And I always like to say, I give the caveat, "Statistics are very, very dangerous things and should never be trusted in the hands of politicians or lawyers." Correlation and causation are not the same thing. But if things keep trending the way they have been, you would have to bury your head in the sand to not think that there was some causal effect here. And I think as a wonderful example is the LA County Probation Department's Most Wanted list that is on their website. When I checked a few months ago, there was 120 felons on that list who had absconded from probation and parole and from the post-community release supervision, and were free and wandering around our communities without reporting to probation. And I think they've added to that list since. So what you see here is the list, and you can click on any of them. There we go. So this is just one of the people that was on the first page. His name's Herbert Fields. He's a documented gang member. He has an extensive adult criminal history that began at age 18. He has convictions for attempted murder, assault, burglary, felon possession of a firearm, and possession of a billy club and robbery. He served multiple state prison terms, the longest being a 16-year term for attempted murder. He was released from state prison to the supervision of the Los Angeles County Probation Department rather than state parole on January 17 of 2017. And what it tells you on every single one of these Wanted posters is that these individuals were released under the Governor's Public Safety Realignments Act of 2011, AB 109, because it shifted the responsibility from the state to Los Angeles County. And this individual and at least 120 others failed to report to their probation officers under this very low level of supervision and absconded from post-community supervision into our communities. So as far as we know, Mr. Fields is still wandering around the community somewhere completely unsupervised, and that is directly due to AB 109. Moving on to Proposition 47, the Safe Neighborhoods and Schools Act, I like to say, because nothing has ever called the Increase the Risk of Harm to the Public to Save Money Act. The key features of 47, it reduced certain drug possessions from felony to misdemeanor. It reduced theft under $950 to a misdemeanor, which, by the way, could include theft of a firearm. If someone steals a gun, it's not worth $950, it's a misdemeanor. And it allows persons already convicted of those offenses to petition for reduction and resentencing. It has some other minor details, but the key impacts are, again, it decreased the prison population, it increased the county jail population, low-level offenders were being released early to make room for those non-non-nons, and again, we see the rising crime rates. So if you look now at the enactment date of Prop 47 in late 2014, this is as recent as the Department of Justice statistics go, so we don't have hard numbers to see what happened to the crime rates after 2015, at least not from the state of California. Federal numbers do continue to indicate that there's a significant increase in crime in California cities that outstrips the rest of the nation, and that's the federal Department of Justice numbers. But the USA Newspaper Group did a really interesting multi-reporter, multi-newspaper story focusing on the different aspects of Prop 47. And I think you can usually count on the media not to sort of give the more conservative bent to these stories. They tend to be fairly liberal. And in this article, they found that the savings to the state were not being diverted as promised to the local communities to support treatment. And the promise of all this legislation has consistently been, we need to spend money on rehabilitation rather than incarceration. But that doesn't work if you don't actually spend the money on rehabilitation, and they're not. That's the problem. The drug courts have emptied because unless you have a carrot and a stick, no one goes. If they're not going to be incarcerated and nothing's going to happen, the people who should be in drug court, who really need that program, are simply not going to go. And they also found that arrests are down. Arrests are down because the police don't want to arrest people who are going to get out of jail the very next day. They feel like it's not worth the paperwork, or issue a citation which is going to be ignored. So that's the quote you saw there in the paper, in that article. "Caught between ineffective jail bookings and toothless citations, cops are increasingly doing neither." And they had a really interesting little bio on one individual, a guy named Harris, who basically said he didn't start stealing until after Prop 47 reduced penalties. And he bragged about how he keeps his thefts under the $950 threshold. And I've heard anecdotal stories about criminals coming from other states to California because they know that as long as they keep the thefts under $950, nothing is going to happen to them. Finally, going to Proposition 57, the first two, AB 109 and Prop 47, were rain showers, gentle spring rain showers. Proposition 57 is a hurricane. It's called the Public Safety and Rehabilitation Act. It was heavily supported by the governor, and it was passed by the voters based upon what they were told that this legislation did, but they were very badly deceived. The key features, it eliminated direct filing on juveniles and raised the fitness criteria. That is really not a big deal. That was the bait that ended up being the bait and switch. The real problem was with the areas that affect adult offenders. It made non-violent offenders in state prison eligible for parole earlier, and we're going to look at what "earlier" means, and it allows early release of all state prisoners. And that was not in the ads the governor put out, but it does allow the Department of Corrections absolutely unlimited authority to release all prisoners in advance of their sentences, in advance of their parole dates. Now, voters were told this only applies to non-violent crimes. That's how it was sold. This is only non-violent crimes. Unfortunately, the urban myth of the guy serving prison time for possession of a marijuana joint does persist, as false as it is. But remember what AB 109 did with those non-non-nons, the non-violent felons? It shifted them from prison to county jail. They're not in county jail anymore. There are no non-violent felons in county jail. So why do we need Prop 57 to release the non-violent offenders early if they're not even supposed to be there? Because it was a bait and switch. And it never defined non-violent felonies, which leads the legal interpretation to the only thing we have to look at, which is the penal code definition of what is a violent felony. It's a very specific, very limited list that was made for a completely different purpose. So when you look at what qualifies as a non-violent felony, these are some crimes that are not violent felonies under the law. Human trafficking of a minor, hate crimes, assault with a deadly weapon on a peace officer, exploding a destructive device with intent to cause injury, first-degree burglary, assault with a deadly weapon, domestic violence. Violence is in the name of the crime, domestic violence, and it's not violent. Solicitation to commit murder, not a violent crime. Rape, sodomy, oral copulation of an unconscious person or by use of date rape drugs. There is some legislation in Sacramento right now. They're trying to put that on the violent felony list, but not sure if it's going to pass. So the impacts of Prop 57, it's hard to say what the ultimate impact is, but this is what it does. Multiple crimes against multiple victims will be treated the same as a single crime against a single victim, based upon the language of the statute. Repeat offenders will be eligible for release after the same period of time as first-time offenders, regardless of the number of crimes they committed. Enhancements for especially egregious conduct will be disregarded. The Department of CDCR, for everyone who doesn't know, California Department of Corrections and Rehabilitation, will have unlimited authority to award credits to all inmates. And of course, the juvenile offenders will have to be fitnished and have harder rules to get them fitnished, like the minor who was involved in the murder of the Downey Police Officer about two years ago. He is now back in juvenile court, awaiting a fitness hearing. But we won't see the actual impact in terms of crime statistics until we see who the parole board decides to grant early release to. But according to the governor, we're supposed to trust the good judgment of the parole board, who operates not like this city council in front of the public, not like the courts in front of the public, not like legislative hearings in Sacramento that are in front of the public. The parole board does not have public hearings. They are not open to the public, they are not accessible to the public. And they emotionally occur on prison grounds, which are very hard to get to, even if you could try to find a way to petition to get in. So this parole board, the governor said, is who we're supposed to trust to have the good judgment to decide who to release. Well, what have they done this past year or so? They recommend the release for police officer's killer. They recommended release for Manson family killer Bruce Davis. Also, I see that coming up for parole again, who's the female? Another one of the females is coming up. They granted her parole this year. The governor vetoed it, and she is now coming up for parole in September of this year. So they're not exactly inspiring confidence. But now, and this is as far as we got when you saw this, Oliver, we now have a clue where the Department of Corrections is going, because they submitted their regulations to the Office of Administrative Law. As you can see, an emergency regulation, and this is found on their website, oal.ca.gov, under the Approved Emergency Regulations. And this was approved as an emergency regulation bypassing the public comment period on April 13 of 2017. So what does this regulation say? If you want to read it, it's about 27 pages long. It's a lot of legalese, and you have to figure out what it says. But I can tell you some of the things that it says. It finally defines who qualifies as a non-violent felon. And I don't think you'd believe me if I told you, so I'm going to show you the exact language found in here. For purposes of this section, a non-violent offender includes the following: an inmate who has completed a determinate term of incarceration for a violent felony. So we have a violent felony, someone who's serving a term for a violent felony, and is currently serving a concurrent term for a non-violent felony offense. So if you commit a violent felony and also get sentenced at the same time for a non-violent felony, guess what? You're a non-violent offender. It's right there in the language. Once you've served enough sentence to cover the violent felony, you're going to be eligible for early release. Now, I was happy to see, although I was skeptical, that it did exclude registered sex offenders from the early release provisions. And I predicted, I think, in a blog, that they would sue under an equal protection argument if they were not also given early release, because the governor was on TV saying, "Don't worry, this is not going to apply to sex offenders." And we said, "But that's not in 57. It doesn't say that in the law." And he said, "Don't worry, we're going to write rules and regulations." Well, while I was sitting here, 7:30 tonight, I got a news article from the courthouse reporter. Guess what? The registered sex offenders are suing for equal protection, saying it wasn't in the language of Prop 57, so the department can't write regulations making the law cover more people than the legislation actually said it could cover. So they are now suing. And what it ultimately means is the sentences imposed by judges have zero meaning, no meaning at all. All the discretion is in the Department of Corrections and Rehabilitation, and not with the judges that people were getting sentenced to. And the real losers here, the real losers are the victims. Under our current constitution, California state constitution, Article 1, Section 28, better known as Marcy's Law, the Victims' Bill of Rights, victims are entitled to certain rights, among others. They have the right to notice of public proceedings, including parole and post-conviction release proceedings, and to be present at such proceedings. That is in our state constitution. They have a right to be heard at these proceedings. They have a right to participate in the parole process and to have their safety and their family's safety and the safety of the public considered at these hearings. And there's nothing in the language of Proposition 57 that said anything about Marcy's Law or that got rid of any of those rights. So how did the Department of Corrections and Rehabilitation interpret that when they wrote their regulation? It's right there in the language. Victims may submit a written statement, but they have no right to appeal. However, inmates do have the right to appeal. I like to go online every once in a while. The Department of Corrections posts the parole schedule online. I think it's too early to see yet who they're going to be actually releasing. I think the effective date is July 1, when they'll start announcing what they're going to do. But it appears to me, from what I've seen on their website, that they have been granting early release to people, including murderers, for years. I checked some Los Angeles convictions today, and people with sentences of 15 to life for murder were having parole hearings after 10 years, which is way too soon. So they are kind of secretly, quietly, releasing people already, even those who wouldn't qualify under Proposition 57. So I changed my end slide because it's pretty scary stuff, and I'm frightened to see what's going to happen to the state. But I think that we're just going to continue to see rising crime rates, particularly violent crime. And there's really very little to do at a local level to stop the crime if we can't stop the legislators from passing bad laws to begin with. So I think the real answer is for people to really not just write letters, to yell and scream at their legislators, and let them know, if they do not support public safety, they're not going to get reelected. Thank you very much for your time.
Well, Michelle, thank you for coming down. And this is very sobering, but we've heard from our police chief and the LA County Police Chief's Association for some time, a lot of this. I don't know what it's going to take for the public to wake up and want to change things, but I do have a question, if you have a moment.
Absolutely.
I know the officer in Whittier that was killed, and a family member of that shooter was killed directly related to being released early. And then I read about the three-year-old child who was just killed by a drunk driver in San Bernardino. And that person was apparently arrested seven times for drunken public, and I think four DUIs. And it used to be, you know, like on your second DUI, you went away for a while. And apparently, they don't do that anymore. And I'm just curious, it almost sounds like the whole system is kind of falling apart. But there just seems to be more and more funerals relative to the way the state of California handles things. But what else is going on here?
A lot of it is the agenda of our governor, who does not believe in incarceration. They want a model that rehabilitates offenders. The problem is, they keep underfunding the rehabilitative aspects and then balancing the state budget by shifting costs to the counties and local government without sort of giving them any opportunity to get state funds to pay for that. For example, there's a bill in Sacramento right now that would eliminate monetary bail in most cases. But another part of that bill, rather than making people post a monetary amount of bail and lose that money if they come to court, the new system dictates that a new county agency that will have to be formed, a pre-trial services agency, will have to call people to remind them to come to court and provide transportation services at no cost to that individual to get them to court. And those costs are going to fall on the county once again, because the state passes a legislation but makes the county pay for it.
Any questions for Michelle?
I just wanted to know, is this presentation going to be available? Can we post it on our website?
I'm happy to have it posted. My little notes are in there on the notes page, but don't post those. But as far as the slides, you're welcome to do so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I've got a whole list of them here, but I don't want to, I don't know, harass you with these.
No, don't harass me, don't worry. I've been harassed.
So the, I'm not going to harass any DAs, that's not going to happen. Hopefully, not anybody else either. But the primary sentence requirement, I mean, you made a statement that the sentences of judges no longer matter. I mean, they matter to some degree, I think, because the defendant still has to serve the primary sentence. Is that correct?
Correct. So for example, if someone committed a robbery in March, a robbery in April, a robbery in May, and a robbery in June, went to trial and would get sentenced on all of them together.
Right.
So you'd have the sentence on the first offense, and then consecutive sentences of lesser time on the remaining three, that person is eligible for parole only after serving for the primary offense. These are all disregarded. All the subsequent offenses are disregarded for purposes of parole eligibility.
Okay, yeah, I just wondered what that meant.
Yeah, it's technical language. It talks about the primary offense.
Right. So how is the primary, how's the primary offense determined? Of the four crimes that are committed simultaneously, for example, how do they determine what's the primary?
Felony sentencing. Felony sentencing is weird and complicated, but what happens is if someone commits multiple felony crimes, the judge has to pick one as the main term, and they have to serve the full sentence of that term. Let's just say it's a five-year sentence, they get sentenced to five, I'm going to pick a better number, let's say it's a six-year sentence for the robbery, one robbery. They can get six years for that first robbery. But all the other robberies, they can only get two years. They can't get the They can't get the entire sentence on all the follow-up robberies. So they're already getting a multi-robbery break, if you will.
Bulk rate discount for robberies.
They do. There's already a bulk rate discount for criminal sentencing. Now they're getting an even, they're getting a total freebie now. All the subsequent robberies are freebies.
And what's, why is county probation less suited to supervise released criminals than the state, I think it's parole?
Well, they've really upped their game, and I think they've gotten better at it. But initially, probation were the people who sat in the office, they would come in, they'd interview you. Usually, you can check in in a kiosk and just, you don't have to talk to get supervised, you don't get searched, you can check in in a kiosk and say, "Hey, I checked in." Parole were the guys who kicked down doors and arrested parolees. They were a police force.
More proactive force.
Far more proactive, far more investigatory, and would really go after people who had absconded or were violating. Probation was just, it was a lot of paper.
Right. Anybody else? Because I've got a bunch of them.
Michelle, if I could jump in, you were talking about the sentencing. Would you talk a little bit about the credits and how that's going to work under 57? So that six-year term that the prisoner sentenced for, how does that actually then actually play out?
Well, the old rule was violent felonies, you had to serve 85% of the total time, and for nonviolent felonies, you got 50% credit. They did change those, and they've increased the credit. So now, nonviolent crimes are going to get, actually, 66.6% credit. An inmate serving a violent offense looks like they can get up to potentially 50% credit. So they changed the entire credit structure, so the inmates are getting far higher credit amounts than they were getting earlier.
Does that just ultimately mean they don't have to serve even the six-year sentence? Then it's reduced further?
Correct. Yeah, no, the six-year sentence was always going to get reduced by a certain amount. And if it was a violent crime, it would get reduced by 15%. Now it's going to be a much more significant reduction.
So if you have someone who is arrested for the rape of an unconscious person, and they're a serial rapist of unconscious people, and they get arrested for doing that five times, so the first one is the main offense?
Correct.
And you can get, because that's not a violent felony, you can get a 60% reduction of that sentence?
66.3 or something, yeah, 66.6.
And then the other four?
Don't even count.
Don't count. So it almost sounds like, you know, that old saying about crime doesn't pay, the more crime you do, the better off you are.
You get the bulk discount. It treats multiple criminals who commit multiple, multiple offenses against multiple victims exactly the same as a single offender with a single victim.
Right, so you're basically telling people, if you're going to do it once, you go big. You know, you do it a bunch of times, because the subsequent times don't matter.
So the serial rapist that gets caught and arrested for 10 offenses gets treated the same as somebody who did it one time, and then because it's not a violent felony, according to the governor, you get a 60% reduction of that.
66%.
66% reduction on that.
Yes, and potentially even more if you take manicuring classes in prison.
That brings me to, oh, go ahead, Larry.
So the only way to fix all of this is just to write, are we going to be able to fix this, just writing, not us, but the constituents, just writing our legislators?
57 will be very difficult to fix. It was a constitutional amendment passed by a ballot initiative. It would take a two-thirds majority vote of the legislature to alter it, because it is a constitutional amendment. The best that you can do is start redefining what crimes are classified as violent felonies. But it's going to take a mountain of work to undo this damage.
So even if the legislature goes back and redefines the rape of an unconscious person as a violent felony, then that person gets a 50% reduction instead of 66%?
Correct. And remember, the Department of Corrections, even on violent felonies, has unlimited authority to grant what they call good time, work time credits, custody credits. There's no limitation number, other than what's published in the regs, which look like they're already being challenged. There is a possibility, based upon the equal protection argument, like we saw with the sex offenders, the Department of Corrections and Rehabilitation has written more into this law than what it should be legally allowed, based upon the language of the statute. And if some citizen takes it upon themselves to file a lawsuit, they could challenge the regulations, because they are overbroad, they do violate Marcy's Law. But it would have to be probably a victim of crime withstanding to do so.
I just had a question on the rehabilitation. You said that there was supposed to be monies theoretically that flowed through this whole process. Is anything coming through, and are there any, I mean, anything being done in that area over and above what was done in the past? I know, like you were saying, drug rehabilitation, because there's no stick and carrot there, there's no incentive to get involved in the drug rehab programs. Is there any hope in rehabilitation at all?
Well, okay, there's two questions there. There was some money that came out of AB 109, but far, far less than the amount they predicted. There is hope for rehabilitation, in my opinion, but it has to be effective rehabilitation, and the county very frequently tends to use the lowest bidder. The county's right now in charge of rehabilitation. I'm sure you're aware of the healthy debate in front of the Board of Supervisors regarding the new jail that they want to build. The jail right now is a mental health institution, largely. Huge mental health problem, it's connected to the drug problem, it's connected to the homeless problem, but you don't get effective rehabilitation necessarily by hiring the lowest bidder. I believe that there are therapeutic remedies available to the wealthy that would be very effective, subdural medications potentially, some of which are now approved by the FDA. If you have a group of individuals who are not necessarily the most responsible, but could be more responsible citizens if they regularly got the medication that they desperately need, and the support services that they could get under the new jail that's going to be built with wraparound services, rehabilitation could be effective, but it will cost money.
And the unintended consequences, have you looked into any of those statistics in terms of drug use, because people aren't getting the rehab? Are the numbers far greater for drug-related crime or hospitalizations and things like that, just to add to your statistics?
I don't know about hospitalizations, but you have to remember, arrests for drug crimes are down because drug offenses are being decriminalized, and there's no room for them in county jail that's now housing the felons. So it's, the problems all connect to each other.
Thank you.
So do you know if there's any talk of maybe restructuring our parole system? That seems like another way to possibly attack this problem, is make those more transparent hearings, you know, I don't know, maybe put in place some actual empirical standards and not make it so subjective, that sort of thing.
There has been talk among some of the law enforcement lobbying groups. Your proceedings here are televised, Sacramento proceedings are televised, court proceedings, where allowed even, are televised. We feel that parole hearings should be at least televised to the public, so if the public can't physically attend, they should at least be able to see what's occurring.
Some accountability.
Exactly.
Any other questions? Well, Michelle, we certainly do appreciate you coming down and spending the evening with us. We've kind of seen this coming for some time, but this really confirms a lot of the things that our chief has shared with us. And we're hopeful to get more and more of the word out into the community, because we know that we can't do this alone, and we need everybody's help. And it's so interesting about Prop 57 being a constitutional change, and I know the governor spent millions of his own dollars to get the Constitution changed, and you're right, it's going to be a tough change in it back, but we have to start with educating people, and we appreciate your help.
It's my pleasure. Thank you very much for having me.